I, Janet McFetrich.
Hi, Janet McFetrich.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and Constitution of the State of New York.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties as mayor for two years, April 5th, 2021 to April 3rd, 2023.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor, two years, April 5th, 2021 to April 3rd, 2023, according to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Can you hold it up and show your signature?
Thank you.
Raise your right hand.
I, Nikki Malinsky.
I, Nikki Malinsky.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and Constitution of the State of New York.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of village trustee.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of village trustee.
April 5th, 2021 to April 3rd, 2023, according to the best of my ability.
April 5th, 2021 to April 3rd, 2023, according to the best of my ability.
Raise your right hand. I, Kim Trombley.
I, Kim Trombley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and Constitution of the State of New York.
I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge duties of village trustee, April 5th, 2021 to April 23rd, 2023.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee of the Village of Champlain, April 5th, 2021 to April 3rd, 2023.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. We will salute the flag.
The flag of the United States of America, and three red flag of the British stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of members, please.
Trustee Garrick.
Here.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Malinsky.
Here.
Mayor McFetrich.
Here. All right, we're going to start with the organizational meeting, where I get to read a lot to you. If you think we just did this, it's because we did. And it didn't change very much from our previous organizational meeting last fall. Mayor's appointments, the following appointments were offered by Mayor McFetrich. Thomas Renee B. and is hereby appointed village attorney for a term of one year expiring on April 4th, 2022, at the retainer set by annual budget appropriation. Mary Sousa B. and is hereby appointed deputy clerk for a term of one year expiring on April 4th, 2022, at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. Michael Jolker B. and is hereby appointed superintendent of public works for a term of one year expiring April 4th, 2022, at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. Kris Matat B. and is hereby appointed fire building codes and zoning enforcement officer for a term of one year expiring April 4th, 2022, at the salary set by annual budget appropriations. Juanita Munoz B. and is hereby appointed records access manager for a term of one year expiring April 4th, 2022, at no salary. Mary Sousa B. and is hereby appointed registrar of vital statistics for a term of one year expiring April 4th, 2022, at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. Norman Koslowski is hereby appointed to the planning board for a term of five years expiring April 6th, 2026. Peter Visconti is hereby appointed to the zoning board of appeals for a term of five years expiring April 6th, 2026. May I have a motion to accept these appointments?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mayor's committee appointments designations, April 5th, 2021 to April 4th, 2022. The following appointments were offered by Mayor McFetrich. Deputy Mayor, Thomas Trombley. Water and sewer commissioner, Thomas Trombley. Deputy Commissioner, Kim Trombley. Streets sidewalk commissioner, Kim Trombley. Deputy Commissioner, Nikki Malinsky. Equipment tool commissioner, Thomas Trombley. Deputy Commissioner, Amy Garrick. Building property commissioner, Amy Garrick. Deputy Commissioner, Thomas Trombley. Parks recreation commissioner, Nikki Malinsky. Deputy Commissioner, Amy Garrick. Personnel commissioner, Kim Trombley. Deputy Commissioner, Nikki Malinsky. Harassment committee member, Amy Garrick. Harassment committee member, Kim Trombley. Shared services commissioner, Thomas Trombley. Deputy Commissioner, Nikki Malinsky. Insurance commissioner, Amy Garrick. Planning board liaison, Thomas Trombley. Zoning board liaison, Janet McFetrich. Champlain Fire District liaison, Janet McFetrich. Chairperson of the zoning board of appeals, Peter Visconti. Vice chairperson of the ZBA, Julia Gallagher. Chairperson of the planning board, James Robbins. Vice chairperson of the planning board, Thomas Ryan. Budget officer, Janet McFetrich. Recreation committee, Janet McFetrich. A motion to accept these appointments, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Board appointments, the following appointments were offered by the Board of Trustees. Claire Clark and Marie Dupie B. and are hereby appointed inspectors of election for a term of one year expiring April 4th, 2022, at the salary set by annual budget appropriation, with Marie Dupie as chairperson. Beverly Maynard B. and is hereby appointed village historian for a term of one year expiring April 4th, 2022, at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. Kimberly McGoldrick B. and is hereby appointed recreation director for a term of one year expiring April 4th, 2022, at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. A motion to approve? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Board designations, official newspaper. The Press Republican, Plattsburgh, New York B. and is hereby designated the official newspaper, newspaper, sec. Of the Village of Champlain during the year April 5th, 2021 through April 4th, 2022. Motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Village board meeting schedule, the following dates B. and are hereby designated as the official meeting nights of the Village of Champlain Board of Trustees during the year April 5th, 2021 through April 4th, 2022, at the time being 6:30 PM at the village office, 11104 Route 9, Champlain, New York. May 10th, 2021, June 14th, 2021, July 12th, 2021, August 9th, 2021, September 13th, 2021, October 18th, 2021, November 8th, 2021, December 13th, 2021, January 10th, 2022, February 14th, 2022, March 14th, 2022, April 4th, 2022. Further, a copy of said resolution be forwarded to the news media and others having an interest in said meetings and requesting copies thereof, thereby officially notifying the public as required by law and in meeting the obligations of the Freedom of Information Act. Also, that said meeting dates be posted in one conspicuous place in the village as required by law. Motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Zoning Board of Appeals meeting schedule, the second Wednesday night of each month is hereby designated as the official meeting night of the Zoning Board of Appeals during the year April 5th, 2021 through April 4th, 2022, at the time of 5:00 PM at the village office, 11104 Route 9, Champlain, New York. Further, a copy of said resolution be forwarded to the news media and others having an interest in said meetings and requesting copies thereof, thereby officially notifying the public as required by law and in meeting the obligations of the Freedom of Information Act. Also, that said meeting dates be posted in one conspicuous place in the village as required by law. Take a drink, please. Planning board schedule.
No.
No. Whoops, motion to approve? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Planning board schedule, the third Wednesday night of each month is hereby designated as the official meeting night of the planning board during the year April 5th, 2021 through April 4th, 2022, at the time of 5:00 PM at the village office, 11104 Route 9, Champlain, New York. Further, a copy of said resolution be forwarded to the news media and others having an interest in said meetings and requesting copies thereof, thereby officially notifying the public as required by law and in meeting the obligations of the Freedom of Information Act. Also, that said meeting dates be posted in one conspicuous place in the village as required by law. Motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 2022-2023 organizational meeting. The annual organizational meeting set for the 2022-2023 official year and for the various appointments and committees B. and is hereby scheduled for April 4th, 2022 at 6:30 PM at the village office, 11104 Route 9, Champlain, New York. Motion to approve? And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Youth commission, the village shall continue its participation in and with the joint projects of the Town of Champlain Youth Program and with the Clinton County Youth Bureau as a member of said country or countywide youth organization. Motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The Board of Trustees reviewed the following village policies. Investment policy, procurement policy, personnel policy, rules for procedures of public meetings, sexual harassment prevention policy, social media policy, code of ethics, fund balance policy, smoking policy, drug and alcohol policy. Motion to approve? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Annual resolutions, resolution for payment of claims. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain has determined to authorize payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges, and whereas all such claims shall be presented at the next regular meeting of audit, and whereas the claimant and officer incurring or approving the claims shall be jointly and severely liable for any amount disallowed by the Board of Trustees. Now therefore, be it resolved, section one, that the Board of Trustees authorizes payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges. All such claims shall be presented at the next regular meeting for audit, and the claimant and the officer incurring or approving the claims shall be jointly and severely liable for any amount disallowed by the Board of Trustees. Section two, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Motion to approve? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution for mileage reimbursement, whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain has determined to pay a fixed rate for mileage as reimbursement to officers and employees of the village who use their personal automobiles while performing their official duties on behalf of the village. Now therefore, be it resolved, section one, that the Board of Trustees shall approve reimbursement to such officers and employees at the rate of 55 cents per mile. Section two, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Motion to approve? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Resolution for official bank depositories. Whereas the Board of Trustees has determined that Village Law Number 4-412 (3) (2) requires the designation of banks or trust companies through the deposit of all village monies. Now therefore, be it resolved, section one, that the Board of Trustees designates the following institutions as depositories for all monies received by the village treasurer, clerk, and receiver of taxes during the year April 5th, 2021 to April 4th, 2022. Correct, Mary? I changed that. The date. April 5th, 2021 to April 4th, 2022. Correct. Because it said October 5th.
Oh, yeah, because, yes, because we were going to do this at the October.
We did that, yeah. I just want to make sure that since it's in the record that I changed it correctly. Okay. TD Bank, Shazzy Branch Office, Key Bank of New York, N.A., Champlain Branch Office, Chase Manhattan Bank, New York, New York, Key Trust Company, Albany, New York, USDA/Rural Development, Ithaca, New York, and Champlain National Bank, Champlain Branch Office. Section two, that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
So moved.
And a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Standard workday and report resolutions, be it resolved that the Village of Champlain hereby establishes the following, as standard workdays for elected and appointed officials and will report the following days' work to the New York state and local employees' retirement system based on the record of activities maintained and submitted by these officials to the clerk of this body. Do I need to read the box?
No.
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 Okay. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Just one, one swig here. Okay. All right, so we're on to the public hearing. I need a motion to close the regular meeting, or I need a motion to, yeah, I guess, are we even in a regular meeting yet? That was the organizational meeting.
Yeah.
Close the organizational meeting?
Yeah, I think we were open to organizational meeting. Oops, make a motion to open the organizational meeting.
Oh, second.
Okay, all in favor? All in favor of both of those?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, so it's been opened and closed. I didn't realize it had to be officially opened. I mean, I announced it was, but I won't be.
I don't know. Make a motion to go into regular meeting?
No, we need a public hearing first on the budget.
Oh, a public hearing now? Okay.
Yes, so can I have a motion to open the public hearing on the budget?
So moved. And I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the public hearing on the budget.
So we didn't need the other. We didn't need the other.
No, I don't think so.
Just scratch all that out there.
What's that?
We didn't need the other.
The organizational.
The organizational.
I didn't think so.
I announced it was the organizational meeting, so I think that was enough. Okay, so we have, this is the public hearing for the, for the budget. I just wanted to briefly, briefly summarize some of the things in the budget for the camera, and you do have a member of the public here, so if you have any questions, please let us know. The tax rate for this, this next year will be 3.94. That is a reduction from last year. Last year's rate was 4.02. So we are reducing the taxes in general fund, and we will use fund balance of $69,050 to balance that budget. In the water budget, water rates will remain the same, and we will be using a fund balance of $36,005. And in the sewer budget, the rates will also remain the same, and we will use a fund balance of $69,452. So are there any questions? Chuck, do you have any questions?
No.
All right. Does the board have anything they want to add for the public who might be watching this?
No, thank you to the board and the office for, again, doing a great job of this budget. Everyone worked hard on it, especially the company.
Yeah. Yep. All right. So is this, this is the public hearing, but is this also the point where we approve it?
Mm-hmm. I think you come out of public hearing and then.
We come out and then we approve it, yeah, so we should have, yeah, all right. So may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. So now we have a motion to pass this budget?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, how about some discussion? Any discussion? Concerns, questions, comments?
It was a tough budget.
Yeah. It was a tough budget, and a lot of it is, with the pandemic, there's a little speculation on how things proceed, so we're taking our best, our best estimates.
But the good news is, is that we got our first, our first quarter sales tax, and our budget is, what we budgeted and what we received for sales tax over the year, we're up 301 dollar.
So, so. It's just amazing.
You know, we expected to, to lose a few thousand, and we didn't, so that's.
That's great news, and it's, you know, it's great news for the county, too.
Yeah.
For all of us. Yeah.
We, we, we have replaced a lot of the Canadian tax revenue, you know, the county, really, it's 75% of tax revenue comes out of Canadian tourism, in the tourism area, and it's, we've been very blessed, that's for sure.
Yeah, I completely agree. All right, so roll call?
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrick.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye. All right, thank you very much, everyone.
I think you still need to go into regular meeting, though, right?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm reading next, right, number six, yeah. So I need a motion open the regular meeting.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so how about a motion to approve the minutes of the March 8th regular board meeting? And a second?
One second.
Any corrections?
I didn't see anything.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, and a motion to approve the minutes from the March 17th special board meeting.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any corrections on those?
Again, did it seem anything on those?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Presentation of traditions, communications, and general question period for members of the community. Anyone from the community has anything?
Well, I got one question.
Oh, yes.
Is the village going to be getting any stimulus money as far, you know, that's coming to the area?
Yes.
Okay. I was just curious.
We don't know exactly how much it will be. It will go to the county, and then it's going to the town, and then the towns divided between the outside town and the two villages, more or less, my understanding is based on population.
Right.
So I've heard a couple of different numbers, but I don't know exactly what it comes down to, but yes, and I believe it's paid over two years. I think it's two installments. So we will be getting some, which is great news. Yeah.
Can that be used only in the general fund, or like?
Yeah, you know, I don't know exactly what the restrictions are on this.
They'll be parameters.
They're going to be parameters, yeah. I don't really know. I'm sure we'll be getting plenty of instructions.
It's always very detailed.
I'm sure we can find a place for it.
I'm sure that we can appropriately find a place for it. Yeah, definitely.
Yep.
Good use.
Okay, report from the codes enforcement officer. Our new code enforcement officer is Kris Matat. He, Mike retired last week, and Kris has started on his own. I told him he didn't need to come tonight because tonight's kind of a long meeting, but I will have him come next month so you can all meet him, maybe talk to him about different parts of the job and, you know, just how we all interact. He's started off to doing very well, I think. He's sent out a, a letter or two. He's very interested in learning more, so I think he's going to do a great job.
Awesome.
All right, my report. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Nikki Malinsky and Kim Trombley for being re-elected to the Village Board of Trustees. Being a public servant has its challenges and rewards. I thank you both for your willingness to work hard to keep the village a good place to live. I'd also like to thank the voters for re-electing me as mayor for another term. I value your support, and I look forward to continuing working with you to bring improvements to our community. Everyone's voices are important. I encourage you to call me to discuss any ideas or concerns that you may have. COVID vaccine, COVID vaccinations are available in our area. Residents who wish to get vaccinated and are having trouble getting an appointment should call me, and we can help you get signed up. We're very hopeful that we will be able to offer some community gatherings this summer and still follow recommended Clinton County Health Department guidelines. As the weather gets warmer, many of you will be spending time outside with plans to enjoy a small campfire. I remind you that now and through the month of May, there is no burning in the Village of Champlain. The board will discuss lifting the ban on recreational fire pits at the May meeting. In celebration of Earth Day and Arbor Day this month, on May 1st, there are going to be some activities offered for families and individuals to perform. I have organized an event on Facebook, and it will be shared on the village website. In addition, I would like to recognize some, several people who have been helping me clean up the village streets and parks. Those include Manon Lejar, Leanne Bedard, and her daughter Riley. I will continue this effort every weekend, so if you would like to join me, please let me know. To the others who are cleaning their neighborhoods, I also extend huge thanks. Let's hope spring weather arrives soon, and we can all get out and enjoy some warm temperatures. Champlain is a great little village to stroll in, chat with residents who are out, sit on one of, at one of the many park benches and watch the river flow by. Sometimes, the simple things in life bring the most pleasure. Thank you. Report from the trustees. Nikki?
There wasn't a whole lot in the last couple weeks, but with Easter, the library board decided to throw together another Easter bunny setup. We had the bunny set in the background so people, our parents can come and take pictures of their children in front of it, and it was all done by donations, and we raised $139.
Oh, that's great.
For an hour and a half of a wall setup.
Oh, that's fabulous.
We did have a basket with about eight books and a chocolate bunny to wrap them up, so there was a few dollars in there for that. Suzanne Moore won that.
Oh, nice.
Yep. And the library board is looking for board members, especially someone who can be our treasurer.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Great.
Yes, so if there's anyone interested in that, volunteering for that, just give the library a call, any board members on the library. This Thursday at 1 o'clock at the playground, I am holding a seed starting playdate. We'll just get together socially distanced, the kid, the weather's going to be beautiful, so get the kids out, and you can pick up a pack of seeds and dirt, and you can take them home and start your seed. So get the kids out, um, and you can pick up a pack of seeds and dirt, and you can take them home and start your seeds inside. I will have activities planned for Earth Day, Arbor Day on May first. And we'll get more information on that out in the next couple of weeks.
Great, thanks.
And that's it.
Okay. Okay, uh, Amy?
So, um, did we announce at the last meeting? I can't remember. We did get the Stuart's grant, um, for the foundation for our new playground equipment. Hopefully we have a date soon to put that in, maybe? Um, because we'll be looking for volunteers to assist with that. I did apply for the Charles R. Wood Grant for twenty-five hundred dollars for more of the foundation. Um, you know, the wood chips are, you know, the soft stuff that's needed for the children's safety. We have not heard back on the grant I wrote for the gardening of the three special gardens within the village. Uh, hopefully we will get that. That would be really amazing if we do. So we would have three separate categories of gardens, one being a pumpkin garden for the really young kids. Um, and it had to be written, um, obviously in the age of COVID too, and how we would accommodate all of that from the initial activities and the planting of the seeds. The other garden is for a butterfly garden to pull some more, um, monarchs to our area, which is, is really needed. And the third garden would be for the older children, for a community garden for food, um, running along our current food garden. So I'm really hoping that's really, and I'll come back and assist with that if we, if we get that.
Yeah.
That would be really great. And on that note, um, after eighteen years of serving on this board, um, I'm resigning. So, um, that being said, I don't have a date yet. If you're okay, it's your call on how you would like that to be, whether it'd be effective, um, when I walk out the door tonight or whether you wait till I actually close on my house or not. It has been an honor serving in every position, uh, on this board. And I know I have been a voice of dissent many times, and I hope that it's just to get everybody thinking, um.
Quite often a voice of reason.
Um, I really have loved being a part of this community greatly, a lot. Everyone has always been very welcoming, even the toughest time with our family. Everyone was always welcoming of all of our foster children and our adopted kids. And we've always felt a part of this, and I hope I leave behind a huge piece of my heart in all the little grills over the time, but sorry, I didn't want to be emotional, but. I walk from room to room at my house and start to cry, so. Moving on to a new chapter in our life, um, I still will be part of the community. Obviously, my job keeps me still in the tri-county area. Um, I'll be happy to continue to write grants and help out in any way that I can uh, because this is special to me, and I thank you all for being an amazing board. We have really come such a long, long way. I, I think when Al walked onto my property, I was swimming in the pool with the kids. I just had my, uh, back surgery. Hey, you want to be a trustee? And that's exactly how it went down. I can still picture him coming down to it. Okay, what does that mean? And then I go over to Kim, and I said, Kim, what's a trustee have to do? I mean, really, how involved? At that point, there were, we would watch the movie, you know, the, the video of, you know, arguing over the price of nuts and bolts, um, as Paul would put it, and we would laugh. So anyway, we've come a long way. It has truly, truly been an honor, and I thank each and every one of you. And I thank you, the community, um, of Champlain. Your heart is huge, and, uh, it's been greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you for everything, all of your time, your dedication, your love, everything.
Yeah, you're going to be a big holder.
Thank you.
We're going to miss you.
We're going to miss you.
Some will be partering. It's okay.
Kim?
Um, I actually don't have anything to report this evening.
Okay. Tom?
Uh, yeah, congrats to the newly elected officials. And, uh, and Amy, I am really, I'm almost tearing up like you are, so I'm going to miss you.
Thank you.
Um, I have a blood drive coming up April nineteenth, so please, everybody, come out. Last time our numbers were down. I hope it was because of all the vaccinations.
Send me a text to remind me, will you?
I will. I will do that. And I'll post it on Facebook again as well.
I'm going to put it in my calendar.
Um, the only other thing I have to the rest of the board is, is spring is coming, and I've got to touch base with a lot of mechanicals to get that handle attached to that kayak launch.
Oh, that's right.
It's time to think about that. I tricontacted them a couple of times through the winter, but we couldn't even get down there and measure it. It was too various now, so I just let it go. So I've got to get a hold of them and get that moving, because I'm hoping we're only weeks away from trying to do that.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that's great. I'm glad to remember that. All right.
I just wanted to, it's on my radar.
Yeah, great. Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, uh, report from the clerk treasurer?
Um, everyone, everyone has their expense and revenue reports, um, for March. Um, I'm going to tell you that we're pretty close to being right on target.
I was noticing that.
Which is good. It is good.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially for the year we've had.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we need to do the transfers first?
Um, yeah, I would like to do it. Oh, wait, do we have water and sewer billing?
Oh, yes, that's right.
Um, water is fifty-nine thousand four twelve twenty-seven. And sewer was sixty-two thousand seven sixty-eight forty. Do you need those again, Tom?
Yes, please.
Water, fifty-nine thousand four twelve twenty-seven, and sewer sixty-two thousand seven sixty-eight forty.
Thank you.
Okay, let's take care of these transfers.
Okay, so, and we have a couple of transfers that we need to do. Um, to A fourteen fifty-point-one elections, personal services eighty-five dollars. From A fourteen fifty-point-four election contractual eighty-five dollars, because we had two elections this year.
Mm-hmm.
That's true.
Yeah. A fifty, um, to A fifty-one forty-two-point-one snow removal personal services, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. From A fifty-one forty-two-point-four snow removal contractual, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. Um, to A eighty-ten-point-one zoning officer, a hundred and eighty-two dollars. From A eighty-ten-point-eleven zoning consultants.
Make a motion to approve transfers as read.
A second, please?
Second.
Discussion, any questions about these? Roll call.
Trustee Malinsky. Trustee Garrick.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
And now we have the warrant, um, with additional invoices. Oh, shit. The additional invoices are six thousand fifty-two dollars and sixty cents. I messed it up. And the total warrant of twenty-five thousand four hundred and three seventeen.
Is there a, a motion to pay the warrant?
Yeah, I make a motion to, um, approve the warrant with additional invoices, which totaled twenty-five thousand four hundred and three dollars and seventeen cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? Questions on any thing on the assor? I don't want to rush anyone, but if anyone has questions. Okay, all right, roll call, please.
Trustee Garrick.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McCutcheon. I, trustee Malinsky. Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
You have to do that once in a while. We're on our toes.
Uh, report from the superintendent. Are you there, Mike?
Yep. So this month is, uh, I was, I was, I was, I was, I was in a little bit of stuff. We were in the transition stage between ice and snow, and, uh, and not, like, even with that, we put away that. This move here, we got going early, trying to clean coves and, uh, and drains, so we weren't pretty good shape. We had a couple that were froze, and we had the jet, um, started on the spring cleaning up. We're going to start sweeping, uh, going to start sweeping here very shortly. Uh, the water, we did water ratings, uh, we had a few meters that had to be repaired that weren't working, we had to swap. We had one radio that's bad, and, uh, last Wednesday we did a, a water main break. We're ice-lined in May. On the sewer, we had a couple pumps that we sent out to be repaired. They came back on Thursday or Friday, Friday, I guess it was. Um, one of them, well, one of them was good, um, had a leaking seal. They repaired the seal. They didn't, they didn't, had no charge for us. The other pump, um, it's too bad, it's not rebuildable. So, um, during the pump was, we swapped out today with a pump, with a pump that was bad, that was in the wet well. And they're supposed to come over this week and, uh, pick that pump up to bring back and see if it's possible to be rebuilt or not. I think what he, that one, I think the pump that he's sending over is like a ninety-nine, so it's, uh, they're at the end of their, they're at the end of their life. For equipment, we did get the power steering cooler on the truck, the new weight slide and head block. We also did the, uh, we did the five-hundred-hour service on the trackless, we did the thousand-hour service on the mower. So I do have a, like, you know, it's, I mean, I have a few purchase requests, also, um, if anybody has any questions on that.
No, I think we're all set on the report. You want to go over the purch, uh, purchase request? Am I losing? Are you there, Mike? Oh, yes, I can hear you now. No, no questions. You can go on to the purchase requests.
Is that freezing?
Can you hear me, Mike?
It's trying to reconnect. I can put him on the phone. Just let me call him. I'll just put him on speakerphone.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, Mike, so I'm.
Once I sent the purchase request, you cut me right up. Uh, I don't know, I froze up somehow.
Yes, well, I.
I didn't do it.
I, uh, I did too, so we'll just use the phone. You're on speaker.
Okay, no problem. So I do have a few purchase requests. Um, the first one I sent everybody email, it was, uh, for Clean Waters. And the price is going to be going up for, uh, the chemical we use at our wastewater plant. That helps it, the solids collabulate to put it through the press. So, uh, I'm looking for, uh, looking to get two drums. Usually two drums will get us through one year. Um, and I believe we're on our last drum now. Usually every year we buy two drums. So I'm looking to get, uh, I know that the price should be, the, the price, it should be like seventeen hundred and eighty-eight dollars delivered. But sometimes there's a small fuel surcharge, so I was looking to get like up to nineteen hundred approved. That way, if there's a small, it won't be that much, because if the small fuel surcharge is not over what we approved.
I make a motion to approve nineteen hundred dollars for two drums of polymers.
Is there a second?
Second, I think.
Discussion, questions for Mike about this?
Thanks for standing on top of that.
No, it's, uh, very clear.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrick.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
Okay, Mike, that's.
One is, uh, is the, the pump that's bad at the wastewater, we're going to have to replace. Usually, um, they're flight pumps. Uh, I did get a quote for a flight pump, which I had sent you guys. Um, it was like ninety-two, hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty cents.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we were able to find, um, an alternate brand pump with an adapter to go onto the flight rail system. I have to check a few more measurements, but I believe it's going to fit, um, the heights are going to fit right into our, right into our, uh, rail system to use it. That pump, they sent me a quote on the pump, but it's freight to follow, so I don't know what the freight is going to be. The pump price is fifty-five twenty-nine for the pump and the adapter, which is almost not quite half of what the, of the flights were. I would, I'm, I'm, I'm looking for somebody else that sells the same pump. I've got to get a second quote. But I'm going to suggest, because I don't know the freight, uh, if we could approve maybe up to like six thousand. Um, that way we're, uh, we're covered, because I know the, the freight on the flight was like four hundred and four dollars still.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I am going to look if I can find another company that sells it that's less, and obviously it'll be less. But this, right now, that's, that's quite a, that's quite an alternative versus ninety-six hundred.
Yeah.
I'd like to try one and, and try it, and if it's going to work for us, then, you know, we can look, in the future, when we need to replace the next one, we can look at it, because the one we just sent back, being a ninety-nine, I don't know what's going to happen. Once they take it apart, maybe we'll end up, next month, I'll have to get one more, so we have spare. I, I don't know. We do have five of these pumps in use, three at Main Street and two at, uh, at the wastewater.
So that's why you're saying we may have to order two.
Yes, we may have, depending what happens when he comes this week, he picks up the one he just pulled out. He said it was rattling real bad. I, I have a feeling that, uh, the impeller is shot, and I don't know if it hurt anything else, but, uh, being a ninety-nine, the pump is, had a lot of runtime. I won't know until I take it apart and, and see if it's going to be worth rebuilding or not. I mean, if it's going to cost you six or seven thousand to rebuild it, you, you might as well, if, if this style pump works right here, uh, we might as well go this route. The other thing is the leak time. I know, um, I know the estimated delivery on, on the alternative was like two weeks, where the flight was like, I think, eleven weeks. And parts are readily available, so you don't have to, it's not just one supplier flight where you have to order them and, and wait for them. Because the last, the last pumps we ordered took quite a long time to get here.
Well, sounds like it looks right.
I'm looking to see if we could, uh, approve up to like six thousand dollars to replace this pump.
Yeah. So, is there a motion for that?
Um.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Other discussion, or questions for Mike on this?
And the warranty was the same on both as well.
No questions?
No, no questions against. We'll explain.
Yeah, roll call, one you?
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrick.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye.
All right, Mike.
The third thing was, uh, room for our sweeper. We, we have a set on there that are partially wore. Once we start sweeping, we're going to have to change them out. Um, I did get one quote, uh, the same place that we purchased them last year, and they were within like fifty cents for the set. They didn't go off because they ordered track drill a little time. I am working on trying to get, um, a quote from somebody else to see. I know there was one of the places locally that carried them, but I wanted to talk to some of the superintendents. Some of them said that they. But I wanted to talk to some of the superintendents, some of them said that they, they had purchased them, and they, the longevity wasn't, wasn't wonderful. So I wanna do a little bit more on that before, before I order from that company, just to, to make sure, you know, it's gonna be half a life, that it's not worth us, worth us, uh. Buying it from somebody else. So, for, usually we go through two sets, I'm looking to see if I can get up to seven hundred and four dollars approved for two sets of brooms. For our trackless sweeper, clean the streets.
Seven oh four.
Seven oh four, there, there's three fifty-two a set.
Okay.
And the last chair we paid three fifty-one fifty-seven, so it's within fifty cents.
All right.
I make a motion to approve seven hundred and four dollars for two sets of broom waivers.
Second, please?
Second.
Discussion? I mean, we, we need them sooner than later.
Yeah.
And they have them installed.
Okay.
But I wanna check on the other ones first and make a few more calls, I talked to some people today, some were out, um, just to see. Because I did find a place that looks like they might be a little bit less, but I don't know about the longevity. A few people I had talked to said they didn't last as long, so.
Okay.
And it wasn't a lot less.
No, that's, not worth doing.
Yeah, go, go with quality. Roll call.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
Uh, the other thing I had was, um, our enclosed trailer, we had some snow damage this winter. Um, and I sent an email for that, I sent that out in the email as well, we did, I did, uh, get a quote from the company we bought it from. Um, I did, the jester did come, look at it, um, they approved it, and we should have a check any day, he sent a check out, I think, on the second. But we will, I'm sure we're gonna have a little bit to pay, because we do have a five hundred dollar deductible. Shared company, so I don't know what it's gonna be yet, I don't know how to go about you guys approving it, but I know we, we're gonna have to get it fixed, so I don't know how, how.
Well, if we're just paying the deductible, can't we get it fixed? And then just put, then we'll approve the, uh, whatever you have to pay.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I just wanted to give you guys a heads up on what was, what was going on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
All right, that's all I have for now, for, for purchase or purchases.
Not bad, Mike.
All right, thank you, Mike.
It went easy this time. For next month, because it's getting close to the end, and I gotta look at culvert and whatnot, because the price is going up daily. Uh, because the plastics and polymers, so I'm working on that now, is trying to get prices from culvert, we're gonna have to get some culvert before. Before we wait too long, where we can't get it, or, uh, where the price is doubled.
Yeah, all right. Okay, thank you.
Got it.
Okay, all right, I'm hang, I'm hanging up.
Enjoy your vacation.
Good night.
Aye. All right, uh, correspondence?
Um, Court Stewart's Holiday Match Grant, letter to N D R C from Mayor McFetrich regarding CEID grant. New York State Department of Transportation chips funding, J C O report, and correspondent code officer Matas to Crystal Berger.
Can you guys write a thank you note to Stewart's for their grant? You want me to do that?
We can do that.
Yeah, we usually do that.
Okay, yeah, we can do that. Uh, I don't have anything listed on our new business, but there is a topic that we have to discuss, at least briefly. Um, well, maybe in depth, and that is the brush collection. So, we're already getting people who are upset that we don't have a, uh, we don't have a brush collection site. And that's one topic, the other topic is, do we have a, should we have a village pickup of sticks and leaves and whatever? One or two days, and then take it somewhere, and where's that going to be? The residents are already calling, and they're, some of them are quite upset. That, especially the elderly that hire people to clean their yards, and now they have nowhere to take them, except Morrisonville, and that you have to pay. What are your thoughts?
Um, my thoughts are somehow need to try to, to try to pick it up, at least. At least the spring clean, cleanup, because I agree, the business need a, need a way to get rid of it. Did we look into the town to see if there's a chance we could do a shared service with the chipper and try to get rid of this stuff?
I did, I did, I, I spoke. I spoke to Larry about that, and he, um, when he got back to me, he told me the hours that the Morrisonville. Collection place was open and the cost to take brush there.
Okay.
So they, they don't, I, I don't, he didn't mention the chipper, I, I did, but he didn't mention the chipper, but. It sounds like they don't have any kind of place where they would want us to join in to bring debris.
Does Russell's Point have a chipper?
I mean, we can, we can look for a chipper, we could rent a chipper, but where are we going to put the chips? Even, I mean, we could open it up to the public to come get chips, but where are we going to put stuff?
Can we stockpile a pile of chips where, where the old dump was, where we're putting dirt right now?
I can talk to Mike about it again, it's really a nice clean work area where they go in and out very easily with these water breaks now. I think that's one of the things, reasons they don't wanna clutter it up with more stuff. I've also asked about the old water, um, tower, if there's any space around there.
Right.
Thinking maybe one side of it might have room. I, I, but I'm looking for ideas.
Yeah, so I guess that, that's where I'm at, it's like, I think we need to pick it up. I think the, rather than bring it and pay to get rid of this stuff in Morrisonville, we need to find a way to chip at it. I don't know, maybe Mike could contact Russell's Point to see if we could help them in some ways and.
They used to, we used to do with Russell's Point, what does Russell's Point do with theirs?
I, I just, uh, just a question.
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure anymore.
I think it's where their old brush drop off was, I think that they store it.
They still pile it up?
Yeah, I think they still, that's not open to the public, but I think that's where they put it.
That's a possibility, might have to talk with them and see.
But Mike did tell me that a chipper, the chipper's one thing, but it also has, the chute has to go into a truck.
Right.
So then you need, he said, and then you need a certain kind of truck or certain other something.
Our old dump, the place, I know you have to put sides on it, but.
He, he brought up, but he did bring up a truck as a need.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Be able to rational and you'd have to put sides on it. And cover it.
But it does sound like the board is in favor of at least a pickup of, pickup of debris that's certain days along the village streets.
I think we have to, we're gonna do.
Isn't it, I mean, some people don't have any means, vehicle, whatever, to get even to Morrisonville.
Yeah.
Dump with brush, it's an impossibility.
I know. And they, and, and people don't wanna pay additional amounts for their yard person to haul it down there. It's already expensive to have someone come.
Oh, definitely.
And we have a lot of elderly people who are doing, paying someone to do it.
If we don't, we don't offer any incentive, more and more of these backyard dumps are growing.
Okay, well, um. Send me your ideas, but otherwise, I think I'll talk to Mike tomorrow and about scheduling the dates and.
I'll try and stop him, if you do, and I'll talk, cause we got a couple of ideas about it. If we have to, we'll truck it out of here, but I guess it's because of the traffic in Morrisonville, cause it's not one load, it's gonna be.
Yeah, I don't know what the cost would, I guess that would be something to look into.
It's so much a ton, I, you know, I'm sure, but.
Can we use wood chips in the playground?
I wish.
Don't think it's the right kind of wood, but, but great idea, Amy.
How did we survive as kids, I just wanna know that.
Yeah.
How did we survive without the pillows under our feet to play on the playground? Oh, my lord.
No one knows anyone with land in the town that.
That's what I was thinking too.
Looking for.
Fill.
For fill, or, or just have space where they wouldn't mind, it's, I mean, it's clean.
Isn't there like South Street there, outside the village, there's, isn't there places there, it's a kind of a, a, you know. A gully or something? Well, that's the problem, it's a gully.
We can't, we can't fill a, a gully, that's a, that's a waterway.
Yeah, that's what happened with Kevin's property.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, well, if you get any brilliant ideas, please send them my way.
Yeah, well, we'll.
I'll talk to Mike tomorrow.
Bet you're riding through the country.
Yeah, just riding around.
Just scoping out a land.
Who has clean fill? Yeah, cause usually if people have, you know, want clean fill, they'll put a sign out.
Yeah, and the wood chips are great, they really are.
Okay, all right, that's, that's it, I just wanted to get, get your ideas, so I have no new business, we have no old business. Unless one of you does. All right.
Is basketball nets getting filled?
Is the what?
Basketball net.
The hoop, going back, yes, in fact, we had someone, a resident stop in today and say that he would like to purchase that for the village, for downtown.
I have seen kids behind, you know, playing elementary, playing at the basketball.
Okay, all right, we'll get that purchased and put up.
And we've got that to put up, we've got the volleyball nets to go up, we've got the two new pieces of equipment to go in. Maybe we wanna schedule a date to do that, to time?
Um, well, definitely the play equipment, um, I'd say it's probably not gonna be until May.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, and probably the volleyball net too, basketball, maybe the guys can do that. Yeah, but we can start by measuring out the, the area for the play equipment and, and figure that out. It's on my radar, when we get done. All right, motion to adjourn?
One more?
One more. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed motion carries, don't forget, we have that short meeting next week for the bond resolution and the part two of the secret.
Are you doing Zoom or are we meeting in person?
Whatever you want.
And you'll have to sign your back page to.
Oh, and sign the back page of the, uh, personal policy.
What is the date?
The twelfth.
Amy, I'd like you to stay on until you're actually gone, if you don't mind.
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you.
April twelfth at what time?
Six o'clock.
Regular?
Yeah. Is the camera still on?
Yep.